Okay, welcome everyone. It is June 5th, 6:30 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel and I will be conducting the meeting. And would you please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will have rule call. Councilmember Highland.
Here.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Batchard.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Everyone is here. On my left, City Administrator Donabauer. On my right, City Attorney Arnison. Also with us this evening, representing Bolton and Mank is our engineer, Jason Femright. Tom Olinger from Abdur-Aiken Myers, our accounting firm, welcome. Shannon Sweeney from David Drowne Associates, our financial advisor. Kurt Mank, representing the Arlington Enterprise. Kirby Wickworth, our maintenance supervisor. And I believe there's a few in the audience probably interested in the, either in the hearing or in the street project that's going on. And if you want to speak to the council, you will have an opportunity. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. And any agenda additions? Are there any additions? Changes in the agenda? If not, a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Hattlestead to approve the agenda and, excuse me, agenda as presented. Item number four is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Approval of the May 15th regular meeting minutes. Approval of the bills. Approval of the renewal of on-sale, off-sale, Sunday and community center on-sale Sunday liquor licenses for the Arlington house. Approval of the, approved the renewal of on-sale, off-sale, Sunday and community center on-sale Sunday liquor licenses for the Arlington dugout. Approve the renewal of an off-sale liquor license for the Arlington Liquors. Approve the renewal of on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for Double Tap. And approve the Double Tap LLC as an on-sale liquor vendor at the community center.
I have one question for Ross. With the Sunday sales going on Sundays though, does that affect how we do ours? Or are we?
The city administrator inquired me on that and I suggested that that be the subject of a future discussion. City administrator inquired me about the effect of our, on our local liquor license ordinances that the state legislature has passed a law now allowing Sunday off-sale liquor sales. And I think it's in a little bit of a gray area. The legislature came back and said that cities have the option to basically opt out of that. In other words, locally, we can decide not to go along with that change. But it's not clear to me if we have to now take some positive step to do that, if that's what we want to do, or if we ride on the fact that right now our ordinance doesn't allow the Sunday liquor sales. And I think it's possibly a subject for a future council meeting and perhaps polling the existing liquor licensees to see what they think. As you may know from the media, a lot of the smaller liquor stores were against this change. They didn't want to have to staff their establishments on Sundays. And it was the larger warehouses that, I think, pushed through the change of the legislature. So I think a couple of things, it might be appropriate for the council to review what its position is on this. Query the current liquor license holders and what they think. And possibly if the council feels it's appropriate, even have a public hearing on the subject to see what the public thinks. And then either leave our ordinance the way it is or change it to authorize the Sunday off-sale liquor. But right now, I guess the liquor licenses that we're issuing, I guess based on the way our ordinance currently reads, does not authorize the Sunday off-sale sales.
So we should probably do something next meeting because it's July 1st, right?
That would be timely, yes. Yes.
I certainly wouldn't want our liquor establishments to assume that they can sell on Sunday when that really has not been decided yet.
And a good point I didn't mention, thanks, that the state law doesn't take effect until July 1st. So nobody should be selling, regardless of anything I just said, nobody should be selling off-sale on Sundays in Arlington right now.
Okay, any other questions in regard to the consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is in order to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchard, second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carried. Move on to our public hearings. Item number five, this evening, there is a public hearing, a Circle Drive Improvement Project Assessment Hearing. I will now recess the regular meeting and call the public hearing on the Circle Drive Improvement Project Assessment to order. And.
Then we invite city engineer Femright to discuss, present information on the project.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening to you.
We are here tonight for the final assessment hearing for the Circle Drive Improvements. If you recall, we started this 429 process, when did we start that? Back in early winter. We presented an engineer's report the 21st of February. Following all of the hearing notices, we held an improvement hearing on March 20th where we kind of presented a preliminary assessment role. We've since done a number of iterations of changes to that assessment role. If you recall, at one of our meetings, we talked about how to levy these assessments against the benefiting property owners. It was discussed at the council that the surface improvements, splitting out some of the percentages of that. And we're kind of understanding the number of benefiting lots. And I know there's maybe some confusion, or not confusion, but some thoughts at the Dressin properties, which have three parcels there. The Dressins have every intention of including that as one particular parcel. So some of the thoughts of the council regarding 35% going to Semstone while the remaining 65% would go to the others, would be split up amongst those various lots. That was met with some, I guess, some discussion by the Dressin properties. And they have every intention of combining those. Understanding there's maybe some questions on how we're splitting that up. City Administrator Donabauer and myself met with the three property owners here at City Hall to kind of discuss what some of our, what some of the options are and really what would everyone within that group feel is a fair and equitable way of splitting that up. We had a number of back and forth discussions via email on what they felt was a fair and equitable way to split up some of those improvements. And where we resulted in this final assessment role, which is in front of you tonight, was 55% to the Semstones with the remaining 22.5% going to the Lucas properties or Scott Equipment and the Dressins. And for the purposes of this final assessment role, since they were separate parcel IDs, the last that I've known about it, I just split that 22.5% into equal thirds. And understanding that that may change here before these assessments are levied. But that was the general intention of this assessment role was 55% to Semstone and 22.5% to Lucas Properties and 22.5% to the Dressin Transport, Inc. There was pushed through the sanitary sewer and the water main on a per-lot method to the benefiting properties. The Dressins would assume, you know, the three portions for that sewer and water extension while the Semstone was an individual amount for the services extended to their properties. And that's reflected in this assessment role. We opened bids on this on May 10th, received five bids. And this will be something that you can entertain later in your meeting, but I'll just mention it now. William Mueller &amp; Sons was a low bid of $176, 882.50. And we had an engineer's estimate of $181, 851. So coming in slightly underneath the engineer's estimate. And this role was based on that lower bidder, lowest bidder of William Mueller &amp; Sons. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the council and you can open it up to anybody who has any comments.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this subject at this time? Yes. Would you come forward, please, and state your name and?
I'm Warren Dressin with Dressin Transport. And I just wanted to say that I was very happy with what we came to. And as I understand it, that Jim Lucas also is because he's the one that proposed the 22.5% setup there. And I actually threw out a number that was higher, it was 25, 25, and 50. But Lucas came back with that and it worked, so we're all good. And as long as Semstone is, I'm happy and let's just go forward.
Okay.
That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Has there any written comments been received?
No, there have not.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have comments that they would like to bring forward now at this hearing? Hearing none, seeing none, I will adjourn the hearing and resume our regular meeting. And that's at 6:42. So we are back in session, our regular council meeting. And we will bring this up for discussion at its, another position in the agenda. At this time, I'm wondering if there's any citizens that wish to address the council. Anyone at all? Seeing none, we will move on to item seven, announcements.
This Friday, we have our annual breakfast on the farm from 6:30 to 10:30 at the Darlene Wickworth Farm. Arlington Farmer's Market has a starting date of Monday, June 12th, right here at the community center parking lot. The Public Forum on Community Policing will take place right here at the Arlington Community Center, Wednesday, June 14th at 7:00 PM. And that will be facilitated by the county administrator, Roxy Traxler. And then finally, we have the Relay for Life 5K Color Run, June 17th, 8 to noon at Four Seasons Park.
Any questions on the announcements? Moving right on to communications.
In your packet, the council has a copy of Standard &amp; Poor's Global Rating Letter affirming our AA minus stable long-term rating. MnDOT forwarded their response to the city's recent request to decrease the speed limit within the city limits of Long Highway 5. And that is a preliminary response. So the final response should be coming hopefully by the end of July. Minnesota PCA, their response to the city's participating and signing a joint letter to Governor Dayton and PCA Commissioner John Link regarding Foxborough's pollution has been included in your packet. Sidney County Assessor did forward her revised summary of repeals in the 2017 Open Book Meeting reflecting four appeal requests. You have the 2016 Drinking Water Report, which was published in the Arlington Enterprise. And then the annual Fire, Hydrant, Fleshing Report, April Water and Waste Water Report, as well as the April Building Permit Report.
Okay. Any questions in regard to the communications? All right, we will move on then to item nine. And Mr. Tom Olinger is here on behalf of Abdur-Aiken Myers to present us with the 2016 audit reports. Good evening.
Good evening. Everybody again and some new faces too. So my name is Tom Olinger. I'm a partner at Abdur-Aiken Myers that I've been working with the city for, gosh, it's probably been seven, eight years, if not even a little bit more here. So we have some consistency there. But yeah, I'll certainly, what I'll do today is go through the audit report on what we had for some of the findings and the numbers. And then also, we'll talk a little bit about five-year planning, which we had done a few years ago and try to maybe revisit with that again on possibly doing that going forward in the future and some of the benefits associated with that. So I'll get started with the audit report first. So I go through the management letter, which I, is, it's a clear cover copy, but it will be the one that says, it's the smaller report for you. So we'll kind of go through that. But if there's any questions with the audit report, I'll be happy to answer those. So kind of getting started, just on some of the findings that we had. We do have one segregation of duties finding. And I know the management has worked really hard to try to eliminate some of those, which will note that several of these have gone away. But just kind of one recommendation on the utility billing is just to kind of make sure that, you know, the clerk or finance director just kind of reviews the exception report with the utility billings. So this kind of outlines adjustments that might be possibly made within the utility billing system. So if that is done, completed going forward and signed off on, we should be able to get rid of the segregation of duties findings going forward. So there was a lot of good strides with rearranging some of the duties within the group to eliminate those. So one other item that we had was just inventory reconciliation with electric utilities. I know a few years back, we had some issues just with counts getting done at the end of the year type of thing. So it's our recommendation to kind of make sure that we get counts done, physically counting some of the utility inventory that is out there and have a list prepared at the end of the year for what those amounts are. It's just kind of good procedures there. I know probably three or four years ago, we had that finding and it kind of went away. But this year, I think, just it kind of slipped through the cracks there to make sure that, it doesn't necessarily need to be done on December 31st type of thing, but at or around year end, we should have that listing in the counts.
And are you referring to equipment or?
Yeah, like transformers and wire or anything that's out there. There's not a, there's not a whole lot there, but enough that those counts should occur, so. And kind of turning to the next page, some of the prior year findings that went away this year. As I talked about, we had segregation of duties for payroll, dispersments, cash receipts and investments that we had in the previous year. Steps have been taken, so those have been removed for this year. Also, along with the financial report preparation finding has been reviewed, has been removed this year. We still prepare the report, but we feel that management reviews the report and provides feedback and has a strong enough understanding that we can eliminate that report, that technically they could draft it on their own, but just for convenience purposes, we will continue to draft it, but there is proper approval. And that, that's pretty common with cities your size. It's just to have us be a part of the drafting process for review. And it's more really kind of cost-effective to do it that way. The final item that went away is that last year, we had noticed that there was some outstanding checks that were held over three years. So for this year, that, and we're on page three if. Yep, right there. Outstanding checks. So those have been cleared up. So that is something that we either reissue the checks or note if they're void or if they, if we can't reissue the checks, that these checks are submitted for unclaimed property at the state. So during, during 2016, those steps were taken to eliminate this list finding going forward. Okay, we'll turn to page, page six, which will outline the financial position of the general fund. Taking a look at the general fund, the overall total fund balance at the end of the year was a little shy of $900,000, which is 62% of next year's budget. Normally, the state auditor likes it somewhere between the 30% to 50% of the budget there. So, you know, you've stayed really pretty consistent over the last several years. And this is right in line with what other cities have out there. And the reason why they kind of want that 50% mark is that property taxes and LGA are collected halfway through the year. So we had just collected the LGA and the property taxes as of December. So we should have the highest cash balance at that point. So we need half a year of expenditures and it will be paid. So that's why we kind of set it at that, at that 50%. So the general fund is certainly healthy. As I kind of will point out, some of the items that occurred during the general fund, there was also additional transfer out of about $325,000 that went to the capital reserve funds. So we had excess in the general fund and those were transferred to the capital reserve fund. So if you, if you turn to the next page, or scroll up to the next page, keep going down a little bit farther. So as you can see, revenues exceeded the budget by about $83,000 and expenditures were under budget by about a little over $100,000. So kind of a combination of that, license and permits and intergovernmental had some additional revenues for this year and also some miscellaneous revenues, which are contributions and refunds and reimbursements that also contributed to that extra dollars being collected for 2016. The expenditures were under budget. A few of the, few of the programs that were under budget, the administration clerk expenditures were under budget along with police expenditures and streets and highways. So a combination of all those resulted in the expenditures being under budget by 113. If you look at the transfers out, that had $202,000 more than what was budgeted this year. And I think that was because of the excess revenues that were collected in there. There were some additional dollars that were transferred out to the capital reserve fund. So we're setting aside those dollars for future, future items out there. So combination, the fund balance just decreased by about $10,000 there. But really, we're transferring a lot of those dollars over the capital reserve and it stayed pretty consistent on where you want to be at for the general fund. Turning to the next page, we'll just outline the trends of the general fund revenues. So the overall revenues have stayed pretty, pretty flat over the last several years. The intergovernmental dollars went down slightly this year compared to last year. But last year, we had the one-time small cities highway dollars that came in that we did not have for 16. So that resulted in those dollars being reduced slightly for this year. But everything else has stayed pretty comparable with 15. The next page, we'll outline the expenditures by program. So once again, you know, the expenditures went up just slightly, about $6,000 compared to the, compared to the previous year. And really, all the departments have stayed relatively close to what we had in the, in the previous year for, for items. If you take a look at the peer group per capita, that is, those are the 2015 numbers. So what we do is we take, we take information from the state auditor's office on top of the cities that we do. And we create a peer group of cities similar in size, which is the population under the 2,500. And kind of give you comparisons on where other cities, you know, spend their dollars compared to what you have. So, you know, I think some, some items vary here and there, you know, based on what programs that you have. But if you take a look at the overall total current dollars, you're at 431 compared to last year. Cities your size were sending about $672 per capita for those. So you're certainly under the threshold there. Transfers out, we really don't have a benchmark. And you have a tendency to have more there just because you set up a capital reserve fund to transfer the dollars. You know, some cities will just leave those dollars in the general fund and pay capital reserves out of the general fund. I like this way better just because it knows, it kind of lets you know how many dollars, what dollars are out there for capital equipment versus kind of getting lost in the, in the general fund there. So it sets aside those dollars there. So that's kind of the result of the transfers out being, being higher. If we turn to the next page, these are your special, special revenue funds of the city. Really, you know, probably, you know, the ambulance fund did increase, you know, from additional charges of about $68,000 compared to last year. The only other one that kind of increased this year was the EDA loan program, which increased about $126,000. This was a combination of a building being contributed this year that had market value of about $79,000 on top of sale of assets this year of about $33,000. So a combination of those two resulted in that increase in the, in the loan program for this, for this year. Really, mostly the other funds have stayed relatively comparable to the previous year. Page 11, down just slightly.
I think there's a new operator.
Oh, right there, yep. These, this is the debt service funds. So these are the funds that are paid by taxes and assessments only. These are not, this is not the portion that is paid by water or sewer, stormwater utilities. So kind of taking a look at this, you know, your overall cash is at about $605,000 with the overall debt service fund assets of about $3.3,000. The difference there is the GEO hospital revenue bonds. You have a note that they're basically paying a portion of that, or paying that debt off. So there's a note out there that you're collecting, paying off that debt. And then special assessments are also included in there. So those are collections that will be happening at a later date. Overall, these funds are in healthy shape. I think the hospital revenue bond was a timing on when the collections came for the debt service. That's why there's a cash deficit there. But that note will be paid and the debt service will be, will be paid on that. You know, kind of taking a look at the graph down below of the next 10 years of debt service payments. So we have some additional debt service payments dropping off in 2019. You know, ultimately, as a goal, we'd kind of like to keep this, you know, either relatively flat or increasing slightly as, as we go. And when you, when you see those dips in the, in the debt dropping off, those are opportunities to reinvest back into infrastructure and bond and kind of keep things, keep things flat going, going across the board. So, you know, really, your debt service payments will stay pretty consistent through 19 and then in 2020, they'll drop off a little bit, which is an opportunity to kind of add additional debt at that time and stay, stay flat through 2026. But overall, debt service funds are in, are in good shape. The next page, the capital project funds. Just a couple, a couple items there. The capital equipment fund, this is what I was talking about earlier as a capital reserve fund. So you currently have about $532,000 in that fund for future capital items, which increased a little over $200,000 for this year. The 2015 improvements, some additional bond proceeds were spent down, there are additional spending on there. So you have about $21,000 remaining on that project. Once that project is complete, which is probably pretty close, if not completed, the council should make a motion to close that fund. You know, usually those dollars will go into the debt service fund to help, help reduce some of the levies associated with that, that that's tied to. So I think probably for this year, making that resolution will be good to close that fund. The 2017 improvements did have some costs in 2016 of about $30,000, which will be reimbursed by future bond proceeds in 2017. Okay, page, page 13. And this is the water utility funds. So this kind of takes a look at what your cash flows are for the, for the water utility fund. Your receipts are, for 2016 are the blue line. And the dispersments are broken out by the green being your principal and interest on your debt that the water is paying. And the gray line being the, basically from operational costs there. So as you can see, over the last, last few years, there has been. So, as you can see, over the last few years, there has been receipts exceeding disbursements. We did have a dip down in two thousand thirteen and fourteen from some capital that was purchased out of there, not necessarily from operations, but they spent down some of the reserves in the water utility fund. But as you can see in fifteen and sixteen, that they're increasing again. So, we're at three hundred and seventy-seven. What we usually look at is, as a target minimum cash balance, is to take about twenty-five percent of next year's operating costs plus next year's debt service payments. And that should just be the minimum cash balance that you have for just strictly operations. So, that gap between the three seventy-seven and the two twenty is really your reserves for capital or a rate stabilization type of there. But a lot of times, it's, you know, it's tied into the capital. So, not huge reserves that are there, but we're kind of moving in the right direction on kind of increasing the cash there. You know, it kind of goes back to, you know, a situation here is, what does the next five years look like? You know, so I think we're going to talk a little bit about that. You know, it's, you know, you have the reserves there, but it's kind of a snapshot of this. Now, you have to look at, are those reserves enough going forward for future projects, future debt service that's coming on? So, it's hard to say if that's good or bad without looking on what the future is going to hold for that. And bonds payable, we have about a little over five hundred thousand left to be paid on the water utility fund. The sewer utility cash flows, for the last few years, it's been just, you know, slightly below or break even there. So, there hasn't been additional dollars in the sewer utility fund. I know for this year, actually, the debt payments did increase over that amount due to kind of a refunding that is there. So, cash did drop this year. So, for the sewer utility funds, you're currently, right now, about fifty thousand or sixty thousand under of what the minimum for operations that we have for the sewer utility cash balance. So, I think this is the fund that we need to kind of continue to look at rates to make sure that we're cash flowing there. And this includes the two funds, the joint Arlington Green Isle and also the internal sewer fund that are combined within this fund here. So, you know, I think we had some drops for this year based on the debt service there. So, this is something that we should certainly look at for rates with the sewer utility. The electric utility on the next page, really, the receipts are just slightly above what the overall disbursements were for the last several years. The cash has stayed pretty consistent, about a million dollars over the last several years. You know, you do have about six hundred thousand in excess, you know, excess cash there. You know, usually, the electric utility fund has significant more cash in there just because of the demand and the changes and the rate stabilization that electric can have on top of, a lot of times, it's a little bit older infrastructure with repairs too. So, you know, once again, I think, you know, planning out the next five years, letting know where those reserves are falling is kind of an important piece that we should take a look at here. And currently, we have the bonds payable of about six hundred and fifty thousand for the electric utility fund. The next and final page is just a few ratios that we compare to other cities your size, just some common ratios that we use. You know, I think, kind of taking a look at the overall debt service coverage, that's at ninety-two percent. You know, really, this is telling us, are we collecting enough dollars from operations to cover the debt service payments? So, anything over a hundred percent, we're fully collecting. But as we talked a little bit with the sewer fund there on spending some of those dollars down, that's why that's below that hundred percent is because there was additional debt service coverage that was paid for this year. You know, with that debt service payment, our debt per capita did decrease by about five hundred dollars for this last year. So, we did reduce some of the debt load there. Taxes per capita have stayed pretty flat and below the averages of what other cities have. Probably, the one that I want to point out is the capital assets left to depreciate is the governmental funds and also the business type. You know, I think the business type, we have put some dollars back into the utility infrastructure there. So, you're kind of right at the average there. But the governmental, you know, which is a combination of, you know, buildings and mainly streets that are out there, this is a little bit below what the average is and has been kind of trending down. So, I think, you know, the thing to take out of this is that, you know, those assets are starting to deteriorate a little bit. So, you're going to have to be reinvesting into that infrastructure coming down the road here too. So, that's something to just kind of watch out for because you are below the averages there. So, other than that, I think, you know, the staff did a wonderful job again this year. I mean, they certainly provide us all the information in a timely fashion. And I think Lisa did some training from us this year and really liked that. And we saw definitely improvements and she really took to that. And I think being able to cross-train across the board is huge to have those things in place. And we'll continue to do that to provide the training because if you guys want to learn, we'll certainly help out and work with that. So, are there any questions related to the actual audit report? Okay?
Too good of a job again.
All right, well, that's what I like to hear. So, I'll kind of lead into a little bit. I know I talked a little bit about the five-year planning, you know, and some of the things I'm looking proactively for, you know, what the next five years budgeting looks like. And I think maybe some of the council members that have not gone through that process, we did that a few years ago, kind of sat down. What we do with the five-year plan is we kind of start with the current year budget, taking a look at that, sitting down and making sure everything is kind of in order there. And then, I will come in and we'll do a budget workshop. You know, we'll talk about things of, you know, what I see in the budgets, what, you know, kind of trying to develop that capital plan or expand the capital improvement plan that we have. And then, what I do is then I'll take a look at it and what we can do to meet the funding there. And we sit down basically line by line, creating the budget and projecting it out for the next five years of each fund of the city. You know, this is certainly a good exercise to see where trends are going for funds, what the tax levy looks like for the city, you know, as new bonds come on, how that impacts the city. And then, if there's any problem areas, we can highlight those, that we can do proactive decisions on where cash trends are going for the city. And it's nice to have that in an all-encompassing document that we can provide. I know we provided, you know, some additional information on line item budgets and projections and it helps with the budget process to say, hey, this is what we're going to do. This is when we're going to pay for it. And it really gives the transparency of what the council is planning on doing with the reserves they currently have and why they make the decisions that they make. So, you know, I think that's certainly something that, I mean, we would love to have the opportunity to work with you again. You know, I hope, you know, the people that went through it that first time found it beneficial and kind of learning for everybody. But that is something that I could certainly do a proposal on. And what I can do, I can do it a couple different ways. We could kind of do like a three-year type of contract where we're doing it for the next three years on a year-to-year basis and then kind of balance the costs out. Because like the first year, getting everything changed and has a tendency to be a little bit more than what it is. You know, a lot of times, we're in the seventy-five, hundred, ten thousand dollar range for that. But if we wanted to do a three-year contract, we could probably balance that out over the three years and continue to do an update, come in and do that each year and sit through a budget workshop each year. You know, and that would be probably just that five thousand per year type of thing that we would do for the next three years if we were to do something, something like that. You know, I think it's a great experience to walk through and just making sure that, hey, we're on track. We know what the projections are looking at. I think that first year, I kind of circled back and kind of compared, hey, what were we projecting? What did we, you know, what actually happened? Because we certainly go through assumptions and things change. But having that three-year type of situation, we can adjust changes each year and stay more proactive that way. So, are there any questions that you have related to the plan?
I was just going to say, that document was extremely beneficial to our staff. But also, as us, talking about having Tom and Jason and Shannon, we talk about upcoming projects. Having that guiding document there was pretty crucial. But also, with our recent Standard Poor's bond rating call, I know that they look very favorable on the fact that the CIP is looking five years out, that we're not just one, you know, year-by-year basis. So, I know it's been extremely beneficial.
Any comments or questions? I know we have a few items we should take action on here. And that is accepting, first one, accepting the two thousand sixteen audit report.
I'll make the motion to accept the two thousand sixteen audit report.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Hattlestead to accept the two thousand sixteen audit report from Admiral Lake Myers. Is there any further discussion? Carry no, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Or was no? Carry unanimously. And then, councils thought on the five-year financial plan? Current one expires in two thousand nineteen, is it?
Correct.
And that's just a contract again? In my understanding, that for fifteen thousand a year, probably for three years? Fifteen thousand over three years?
Over three years.
Five thousand dollars a year.
Which this would be a different process than the first time around. Staff felt it would be beneficial to break it out evenly for the years so it's easy to budget for. But also, then, we're updating that plan annually.
Could we put the fifteen thousand on the last year and if we like the first two years?
We would pay it and if we don't, we wouldn't.
Yeah, that's always good to be.
Everybody likes that for one person here.
This is coming from a guy that wants to build a water park in Arlington, so.
I wanted to do that in the Senate capacity.
Well, that's. Well, your opportunity is gone.
So, Tom, definitely, you could bring back an agreement with this council to formally act upon, but just kind of wanted to get your feeling on, is this a direction we want to go? And then, we can bring that contract back.
I think it was beneficial and will be beneficial as time goes on. I'd like to see we do it.
Do you like to make that into a motion?
I'll make it into a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Hattlestead to approve the, moving forward with the receiving of court or a proposal for the five-year financial plan. Any further questions? Carry no, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Or was no? Motion carried.
Okay. Well, I'll get that to you for your next meeting and then, yeah, if there's any questions that come up. In the meantime, feel free to reach out to us and look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you for the report.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number ten, ordinances. First reading of ordinance three one three.
Before you tonight is a first reading for chapter six of ordinance three thirteen. It is a redraft of chapter six, which came before the council. But ordinance number three thirteen is of ordinance enacting a code of ordinances for the city of Arlington, Minnesota, amending, restating, revising, updating, codifying and compiling certain ordinances of the city dealing with the subjects embraced in the code of ordinances and providing penalties for the violation of code of ordinances. City of Arlington.
Thanks. I went backwards and redid, proposed chapter six. I wasn't completely happy with the way it was organized. But primarily, Administrator Donovar kindly suggested that one of our newer ordinances, three eleven, could be folded into this as well. That addressed storage of vehicles on private property. The reason I didn't incorporate that in chapter six the first time around is that ordinance three eleven is actually an amendment to the zoning ordinance. But with her suggestion, I considered that it really more properly belongs with the other nuisance ordinances. One of the problems we've had over the years is the nuisance type of ordinance has been kind of scattered under a lot of different subjects. And some of it was in the zoning ordinance. And that's why it was sometimes hard to deal with nuisance violations, trying to figure out which ordinance they were covered under. And so, just in order to complete that simplification process, I readily agreed with Liza's suggestion that let's go ahead and put ordinance three eleven in this chapter six because I think it does more properly belong there. And then, also incorporating that rather long ordinance into chapter six also required me to reorganize the whole chapter a little bit further to avoid some redundancy. So, that is, I guess, the latest proposal for chapter six. And again, what we're doing is we're giving you these, you know, one or two chapters at a time as first readings to give you the ability to kind of digest and comment on them. And when we reach the end of them all, then we would have a second reading and a further opportunity to make any modifications and then adopt the entire code in one shot. And of course, once the code is adopted, we can always amend it or add to it just as we were able to the, under the old ordinance system. It's just that once we have a code in place, it should be much easier to amend or add to it. The other thing I just wanted to mention to the council, I've been struggling with this for quite a while. The overall index that was presented to the council originally has a final chapter, miscellaneous. And I've been struggling with whether or not to put all these different little subjects under miscellaneous. And I think at least some of them deserve chapters of their own. So, when we get to that point, rather than having one big miscellaneous chapter, I think we may have more chapters for some of those individual subjects. And again, what we're doing here is primarily, as in the case of this proposed chapter six, we have eleven old ordinances that are being folded into one chapter. And I'm not, I'm trying not to make any subjective modifications. That's not my job, you know, as a city employee. That's your job as the elected officials to make changes. So, all I'm trying to do is reorganize it, take the old ordinances, determine which ordinances have already been superseded by other ordinances or portions of ordinances, and then kind of clean up the organization and the language and just put it in a little more organized form. In a few cases, such as this discussion today about the Sunday liquor law change, that's something I'll present to the council and determine if you want to make an actual change or not as opposed to my just reorganizing what we already had on the books.
Are you taking an old resolution that was valuable when it was first issued and bringing it up to date? Or are you putting it aside and say, council, you'll need to deal with this one, this one, this one?
I have a few of those that I'm reserving towards the end. But primarily, and from a legal standpoint, what I'm trying to do is take the ordinances that are effective based on council action and putting those in the code. council action and putting those in the code. And by that I mean, for example, these eleven ordinances that I'm combining into one chapter of nuisance laws, some of those older ordinances were completely superseded by newer ones. And so the old one, you know, if it was completely superseded, in effect, it's already been voided by the council. So I'm forgetting about that one. That's been canceled, so to speak. And then, as you get to some of the newer ordinances, maybe a newer ordinance partially modified an older one. And that's where it gets complicated, you know, trying to make sure that what I'm carrying forward is what the council left on the books, you know, between a partially amended ordinance and a newer one. And quite often, of course, the newer ordinance not only partially amended an older one, but it maybe added a few brand-new things. And so what I'm trying to do is call through all that and bring forward everything that the council has actually acted on as being the current law of the city.
Okay, thank you.
It's like putting together a puzzle.
Yeah, yeah, actually it is, yes.
Okay. Any other questions regarding ordinance 313? And this would be chapter six is the one that's the topic tonight? All right, hearing no other comments, no questions, that will be considered then the first reading of ordinance 313 and in specific, chapter six. We'll move on to item B, 10B, second reading, ordinance 314.
On May 15th, this council held a first reading of an ordinance rezoning a portion of the public cemetery. You'll see that on the screen. Rezoning ordinance remedies and inconsistency in our official zoning map where in part of the cemetery was rezoned R1 residential as opposed to PI for public institutional. So the majority of the cemetery was rezoned previously with the exception of the lost budding access road, which were inadvertently retained as residential. So you'll find ordinance number 314 available for a second reading. It's an ordinance rezoning a portion of the public cemetery from R1, 1 and 2 family residence district to PI, public institutional district. And with council action, this would also send it to, for publication of the Arlington enterprise.
Okay, any questions in regard to the second reading of ordinance 314?
Make a motion to accept ordinance 314? Is that what we're doing?
Yep.
Add to an ordinance rezoning a portion of the public cemetery from R1 and 2 family residence district to PI, public institutional district.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Batcher made the motion. Councilmember Highland, second, and that is to approve the ordinance 314, 314, an ordinance rezoning a portion of the public cemetery from R1, 1 and 2 family residential district to PI, public institutional district. Is there any further questions? This is roll call, isn't it? Yeah. Roll call vote, Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Batcher.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed. The ordinance is approved. Okay, moving on to item number 1180, resolutions, resolution 46-2017.
Correct. Before you tonight, then, in your packet, you have a copy of resolution 46-2017. We have Shannon Thweeny here from David Drouin and Associates to share some really great news, actually, so.
Sure. Greetings, mayor members of the council. Today, as per your previous action, we received bids for the purchase of your bond issue that are funding the 2017 street utility reconstruction project. A copy of the bid tabulation is available. We have a copy here for the newspaper as well. We received four bids for the purchase of those bonds. The low bid being submitted by Northland Securities out of Minneapolis at a net interest rate at 2.519 percent. We projected about a 2.8 in our preliminary planning numbers, so we came in underneath what we were using as a planning number, which is always good. The difference between the two is probably around 30 grand over the life of the bond issue. So 30 grand is 30 grand, and that's two grand a year in debt service, so it's a good result. As we, as Liza mentioned earlier, I believe was included in your packet, was a copy of the rating report from Standard and Poor's. Kind of good to review that report on occasion. It talks about strengths and weaknesses of a community. They feel obligated to spend a fair amount of time on weaknesses. Don't take that personally. It's what they do with every community that they rate. I would just tell you that the double A minus rating is about as good as it gets for a community your size, and it reflects the healthy fund balances and the time you've taken to institute specific management policies, as well as just their view of the local economy. If we were to wait, well, they do wait, what they review as part of this rating process, the local economy or their view of the economy in general for your vicinity is probably in the neighborhood of 40 percent of the credit rating. And there's not a lot you can do about that. It's based on unemployment figures and value of homes, the assessors estimate market value for the entire community. And, you know, probably in that 30 to 40 percent range of the credit rating is based on your financial performance, which you do absolutely control. And so, you know, a little better than a third of this, you know, plus, you know, probably 10 to 15 percent for management policies and things like that are things that are under your control. And you've done a very good job of maintaining healthy fund balances, not having huge fluctuations in cash balances, tax rates, utility rates, things like that. Your auditor's detailed some of the things that he sees going forward that we could work on a little bit. I would tell you that that's certainly good advice, but you are in good position as a community, and you've done a good job of managing the finances. So, and that results in a double A minus credit rating, which, again, I would say is about as good as it gets for a community your size. I don't think I, well, I know I don't have a community your size that has a better credit rating than double A minus. So, and part of this process is you simply have to be bigger and have more cash in order to achieve that higher level. So don't think that's something that you need to aspire to. The level where you're at right now is absolutely very good. So, more than happy to answer questions on the rating process on the bonds that we're about to issue. We have a finance plan in place. Part of the handout is a copy of the updated schedule. We looked at the schedule quite a number of times. That looks at the debt service payments and the sources of revenue being tax levy, water revenues, sanitary sewer revenues, storm sewer revenues, and special assessments. The number that we backed into or the number that actually gets reduced as a result of the lower interest rate is your tax levy. Generally, that's the area where we tend, where we want to have the least impact if possible, simply because that's something that councils tend to want or focus on as a priority. So, that couple thousand dollars less is reflected in a couple thousand dollar lower tax levy than what we were originally planning. So, more than happy to answer questions. There's a lengthy resolution that was provided by your bond council that provides for the award of sale to Northland Securities. Again, we close on June 20th, I believe. Let me just confirm that. Yes, it's June 20th, and the, that'll simply result in funds being transferred to the city's account. The city did receive a good faith deposit today for 2 percent of the amount of the bond issue as well. More than happy to answer your questions. I won't ramble on any further.
Is there any way that you're able to exponentuate the value in having that S&amp;P rating if we are rating below or?
Sure. Yes. I would say that if we had issued these bonds without a credit rating, the credit rating itself is going to be about $10,000 in cost. It saved us at least that $30,000, just in that quarter point difference between our low bid and what we had projected. Actually, we figure actually closer to a half a percent to three-quarters of a percent even between rated and unrated. I would say since you're at a double A minus, it would be at least a half a percent. So on this issue, you know, it would be in that $50,000 to $60,000 range is the difference between what you pay in interest if we're not rated versus purchasing that credit rating. It's well worth it, particularly when you have a good credit rating like you folks carry. So if you're at an A minus, which is several notches below where you're at today, you know, we may think about it or not do it, but at a double A minus, it's absolutely worth doing, particularly on an issue this size, where we start to question whether or not it's worth purchasing the credit rating is under a half million dollars or less in amount borrowed, because then we're more sensitive to issuance costs. And those issuance costs amount a higher percentage of the bond issue, and then it doesn't become worthwhile, so.
Council, any questions? Hearing none, would someone wish to introduce the resolution approving the bond sale?
I'll introduce this resolution, 47-2017, authorizing issuance rewarding, awarding sale, prescribing the form, the details and providing for the payment of $1,830,000.
It's 46.
Huh?
You said 47.
It's 46-2017.
Did I say that?
You said 47.
46-2017.
Yeah, we knew what you meant.
All right, then, publication improvement in utility revenue bond series 2017A.
All right, that lengthy title?
Yes.
And Councilmember Batcher introduces this resolution. Is there a second?
Second it.
Okay, a resolution is introduced by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Haddelstedt. That is resolution 46-2017, authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details and providing for the payment of $1,830,000, general obligation, improvement in utility revenue bonds, series 2017A. Is there any questions? Any further discussion? If not, vote by roll call. Vote, Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batcher.
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Last thing I'd add is that credit rating process does involve a management call. It's half hours to 40 minutes of terror for your staff, because they get asked a whole bunch of questions that they don't always answer, you know, aren't typically asked, you know, their accounting questions, deep accounting questions. Your staff does a nice job for preparing for those phone calls, and it went very smoothly. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item B, resolution 47-2017.
So tonight, before the council, there is a resolution approving and denying the Ridge U. Sibley Medical Center site plan. Cynthia Smith, our planning consultant, has included a memo as well as our city engineer, Jason Femrite. So essentially, the council's being asked to review and approve a site plan for 601 West Chandler Street. The Ridge U. Sibley Medical Center proposes a small building addition, interior remodeling and reconfiguring a vehicular and pedestrian site circulation area. The building addition will be less than 2,000 square feet with a redefined emergency department EMS access and a new entry festival for public use. This results in the parking lot slightly shifting to the east, and access to the helipad would also be slightly altered. There's a connection to an existing sidewalk with Memorial Park, which would have to be adjusted slightly. This area is rezoned for PI, public institutional. Therefore, hospitals, nursing homes, and medical clinics are permitted uses in the PI district. The subject site is adjacent to a public institutional and residential use area. So, the planning commission did review these documents, and they had found that this site plan does meet performance standards, meaning that the lot size, width, structural coverage, the front setback and side setbacks are compliant. The rear yard setback is not compliant, but this project is not intensified within the proposed addition. Number of parking spots does not change. Lighting, the existing parking lot lighting will be restored with the reconfigured parking lot. The helipad does require MIND approval requirement from MIND Aeronautics. And then our city engineer provides approval for grading drainage and stormwater plans. As you can see within the memo, the planning and commission reviewed the site plan at the regular meeting on June 1st. The planning commission recommends approval based on several conditions, as you will see listed there. Just to go through a few of them, the use must remain as a medical clinic hospital at 601 West Chandler Street. Any alteration of the helipad requires written evidence from MIND approval and submitted to our zoning administrator. Signage requires a sign permit application. Compliance with recommendations contained in city engineer's review memo, which is in your packet, and our consulting planning memo, which is before you tonight. We also are, they are to secure temporary construction easement if needed from the city of Arlington, obviously an issuance of a building permit. And then this approval shall expire in one year after date of approval unless the applicant has commenced construction of the use on the property. And approval of the site plan does not approve any other future expansion or associated improvements on the site. So, in your packet is resolution asking for approval of the Ridge U. Sibley Medical Center site plan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 47-2017, approving the Ridge U. Sibley Medical Center site plan.
Does that include the recommendations from planning and zoning committee?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 47-2017 has been introduced by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Highland, and that is a resolution adopting or approving the site plan for building addition and parking lot reconfiguration at 601 West Chandler Street. Any additional comments, questions? If not, vote by roll call. Councilmember Batcher.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
And Councilmember Haddelstedt.
Yes.
All in favor and opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution 48-2017, item number, sorry, item letter C.
Following the last council meeting and public hearing regarding the 2017 street utility improvement project, council had asked staff to bring back a resolution modifying the designated truck route to remove Alden Street. So you have that before you tonight. There was also discussion about considering Second Avenue Northwest as a designated truck route. But, I mean, I guess we're open for comments and suggestions, but because that road is in need of improvement, I don't know if the council feels comfortable designing it as a truck route as it stands, or?
That could be done at a later date, I presume, once it's?
Correct.
And I think the comment was made by our engineer that if Second Avenue after the school construction is done, would get a mill and overlay that would put that road in a better position to be designated as a truck route at that time.
I'm not comfortable with putting that road right now as a truck route. It's just really rough right now.
Yeah, no, now it would not be.
Yeah, I don't think it would hold up.
Add along with the fact that there is a lot of construction traffic on there that probably would not be the smoothest route for trucks making deliveries and such.
So all these streets or half streets going to Alden, they're, they go there and then they just end?
I would imagine if it's one of the grocery store, you just take name and access the property from there and each of those properties, commercial properties.
So the resolution before you, then, is just the change, the only change being made at this time is removing Alden.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 48-2017, modifying the truck roads?
I'll second it.
Resolution 47, no, 48-2017, modifying the truck routes has been introduced by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Haddelstedt. Is there any further discussion? And again, this resolution would in effect remove Alden Street as a truck route. truck route.
Signs would be taken down and such.
I suppose that, yeah, that would be part of the construction anyhow, but would not be put back up again. Okay, any comments, questions? If not, roll call vote. Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to, uh, item D forty-nine dash twenty seventeen.
Uh, the city currently holds assets in, uh, W. Minnesota City's four M money market fund. And then as discussed tonight, Shannon Sweeney said the city will anticipate receiving the proceeds from the bond sale. Normally that gets put into the city's savings account and it's utilized to make, um, the pay applications from there. And so a representative from the Leeds four M fund came out to meet with staff and introduced us to a subaccount, which would track our bond proceeds for the upcoming two thousand seventeen project. Subaccount provides a higher return than what we were doing in the savings account, but yet provides liquidity so we can make those payments on a timely basis. So before you tonight is a resolution authorizing, uh, reauthorizing membership into the four M fund.
Well, we have been involved in this before, or?
We have been, we currently have in the money market account.
Okay, all right.
Any idea what the return is?
Nope.
No? Whatever it is, it is. Better than a savings account.
Be higher than savings.
I'll make a motion or introduce, um, Resolution forty-nine twenty seventeen, reauthorizing membership in the four M fund.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
I think Highland's got it.
Oh.
Councilmember Batchor introduced Resolution forty-nine dash twenty seventeen. It was seconded by Councilmember Highland, and that is a resolution reauthorizing membership in the four M fund. Additional comments, questions? If not?
To your, to your point, Councilmember Cowell, I'll make sure I get that interest rate information to you, just so you know.
We'll vote by roll call. Vote, Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, the resolution is approved. Moving on to Resolution fifty dash twenty seventeen.
This is just an annual resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for the Arlington area Chamber of Commerce for their December second Arlington event.
I'll introduce, uh, Resolution fifty twenty seventeen, approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Arlington area Chamber of Commerce on December second twenty seventeen.
Second.
Okay, Resolution fifty dash twenty seventeen was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Cowell, and that is a resolution authorizing the application for a lawful gambling permit for the Arlington area Chamber of Commerce on December second twenty seventeen. Any further questions, comments? If not, vote by roll call vote. Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
And Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, Resolution fifty dash twenty seventeen is adopted. Uh, there's no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business at this time, item twelve, uh, Circle Drive, or Circle Drive Street Utility Improvement Project.
So as a continuation from our public hearing tonight, city engineer Jason Femright, uh, shared that we did have five bidders for the Circle Drive Improvement Project. Um, that information is in the resolution that was attached to the packet. Uh, the lowest bidder was W. M. Mueller and Sons at a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. The council's being asked to, um, approve the award of this bid.
Is it a resolution?
It is.
Correct.
Uh, I'll introduce Resolution fifty-one twenty seventeen, awarding the bid to W. M. Mueller and Sons for one seventy-six eight eight two and fifty cents.
Second.
Resolution fifty-one dash twenty seventeen has been made, uh, has been introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Cowell. Is there any further comments, questions, concerns?
They beat the bid by thirteen thousand dollars, the next lowest bid. It's pretty good.
Okay. Right, uh, roll call vote. Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yep.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, resolution is adopted. And the last resolution is Resolution fifty-two dash twenty seventeen.
City engineer Jason Femright did forward a copy to this council this evening, the final assessment rule, so the council's being asked to approve the assessment.
Okay, this is a resolution and it's, uh, based on the, uh, final assessment rule that was handed out this evening, uh, which is again twenty-two point five percent, uh, Lucas Properties, twenty-two point five percent Dresden Transport, and fifty-five percent Semstone.
Seeing that all properties are, are satisfied with the amounts there, I'm going to introduce Resolution fifty-two twenty seventeen, uh, adopting an assessment.
I'll second it.
Resolution fifty-two dash twenty seventeen, approving the assessment on the Circle Drive project, is introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski. Is there any questions? Roll call vote. Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
All in favor and unopposed, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to miscellaneous business, uh, maintenance department. Our maintenance supervisor, Kirby Weckworth, is here. Kirby, you've got the floor.
Get to the important business. Okay, well, I was just gonna kind of go back and take you through what this department has all accomplished since I took over back in mid-March, uh, as the maintenance supervisor. Oh, put the line on page. Uh, this spring, I was able to get one full sweep in of the streets with the street sweeper. Uh, also around that time, I was, I worked quite a bit on alleyways, try- trying to dress up the alleys and got some good feedback from a couple of residents who had problematic alleys, so that was nice to hear. Um, the Sportsons Park baseball lights, Neusmeyer fixed. There was two breaks in the electrical, in the, in the wiring, uh, from last, I think it was last fall.
Mm-hmm.
Or spring, maybe, when the, when the backstop was put in.
That was last fall, yeah, yeah.
Uh, he had cut the line in two spots, so we had some lights not working. Uh, so he fixed that and he also replaced twenty-plus bulbs up in the, up in the lights. Uh, so the organizations, uh, have gotten back me on that. They were really happy about that as well. I think one game they said they actually were able to turn the lights on and that was pretty exciting for the kids, so that was good to hear too. Um, TruGreen sprayed our parks and some of our other properties. I think that was in middle of May. Uh, they did the compost and the wastewater, Four Seasons, Fairview, Frenzel, Memorial Parks, Sportsons Park, Cemetery, the community center, and the ditch across Highway five here. And I personally am very happy with the results. I thought it really turned out well. I don't think I've seen a yellow dandelion on those properties since they sprayed, so.
They did a good job.
They seem to do a pretty good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, my mowers keep me updated on what they see too, and they said, really did a good job, so. Um, city cleanup was held, May twenty-fourth, was it? Twenty-fourth. Uh, that went without a hitch too, I think, for the most part. Special thanks to Councilmember Tom Hattlestead and the mayor for helping me out with that. Um, the brush pile at the compost, we were able to hire Herman's Landscape out of Jordan. They came and chipped that and hauled it out for five hundred dollars.
How much?
And, five hundred dollars.
Nice.
And I think.
It's by.
Good job.
I would say ballpark estimate, that pile's probably reduced to an eighth of the size it was. There's just some dirt left over and some things that they couldn't sift through and chip. Um, so that.
They chipped it right on site?
They chipped it on site, yep, yep. And then hauled it away and then they use it for whatever. Um, and then along with that, the compost pile, I've been in the talks with Gaylord Sanitation. Uh, they gave me a price for hauling it out. Um, it's gonna be, it, our budget won't be able to take care of all of it, but I think we can set a price and have them haul a good majority of what we don't want out of that. And they bring it to a farmer and the farmer spreads it in the spring. Uh, there is some good dirt in that compost pile that we found out, so we'll try to keep some of that and then haul at least what we can out that we can afford, make some space out there. Uh, the bare root trees that we ordered, we ordered, I think it was close to thirty bare root trees, and then we ordered, um, some arborvitaries and some evergreens for our parks, for our boulevards. Uh, that, that's, that worked out well. That's behind our shop. Uh, I got that in May. Uh, what else? We got Sibley Serve. I had ten kids help me get a couple of projects done last, two Fridays ago now. Um, on our north Arlington sign, we were able to replicate what they did on our south Arlington sign last year. I think that was around thirty shrubs planted and three crab apple trees. Uh, they also were able to place all the water bags around our planted trees last year in our parks. That was like sixty, around sixty trees we planted, so. They really got a lot done that day for me. I was very appreciative of that. Uh, the senior building renovation is completed as of last Friday. Uh, I think that turned out very nice. A street project started today. Uh, looks like Al- Alden Street was excavated. The blacktop is gone, so they got a good start on that. Um, other than that, that's kind of what I have right now. Just trying to keep up on routine stuff until I can get a second guy in and, and he can take over a lot of that and I can get at some other bigger things that need to be taken care of. Fire department moved in last week too. So they are there. That's where the fire department is right now.
Is that the, uh, maintenance shop?
The maintenance shop, yes, in the maintenance shop.
It glows.
It does. Pretty shiny in there now.
The brush pile where you said there was some that they couldn't take, what, what do you, what's gonna happen with that?
Um, we, we have a ci- a r- citizen who could possibly take that and store it, um, and use it for, for a project that he wants to use it for.
The brush, the, the brush pile?
Yep.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
Along with some of the compost, if we don't want that, if it's just rotten compost.
Okay.
Um, so that, that's a potential use for it. Other than that, I'm, I'm not quite sure yet.
Okay.
Is the slide done?
Oh, yeah.
Not yet. Frenzel, the Frenzel slide, um, yeah, it's, that needs to get done. And, and it's a couple man project, and I had spoken with a couple park board members who were gonna take off a day of work to help me and those dates haven't worked out yet. Um, so hopefully now, within a week or so, or however long it takes to get the next guy hired, we're, that's, uh, top priority, get that slide fixed.
So you have all the parts, all the hardware in your looking for?
Yep, yep, it's in the shop. Waiting to get put up, so.
It won't slow.
Have them stacked on the fire trucks?
Tucked away neatly in a corner.
What's the schedule for spraying mosquitoes?
Well, luckily I haven't heard many complaints yet. I'm keeping my ears open, asking people and, uh, we're into June now, I haven't had the spray yet. You just kind of go based on what you hear and when you're outside yourself. So I, you know, imagine the first spray is coming here sometime, probably after the next rain.
Now, did you, you sprayed last year already, or you have familiarity with the equipment?
I haven't, I haven't sprayed. I met with, uh, Jason, I forget his last name, from Univar. They're our mosquito spray dealer. Uh, and he, he spent a good, almost two hours with me going over how to use it.
Okay.
That was the day actually you guys helped out with the, the.
Oh, yeah.
With the city cleanup.
City cleanup, sure.
That was good that I could spend some time with him and.
Good. So you're already to?
I feel prepared, yep.
Get the alleys in?
Yep.
Speaking of person number two, those interviews are gonna be held tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
So hopefully.
The interview's tomorrow.
We'll have something to present to the council for the next meeting.
Tomorrow and Thursday?
Nope, just tomorrow.
Just tomorrow. I'll do my replacement. But.
Okay, any other questions for Supervisor Weckworth?
Yeah, I have a question. Wh- where are, I, I don't, I'm not sure. I know one of the street committees meetings, or maybe it was the council, we had talked about the grapple portion of Circle Drive with the issue out there with the fertilizer trucks. We had talked about putting a couple of children and play signs out there.
Yep.
Do we have any of those?
I'll have to check on that.
Because I think the sooner we get those out there, the better, or we're probably going to have another visitor.
Have another visitor, yeah.
So I think sooner we get that accomplished.
I agree.
We can maybe alleviate a little issue there.
You bet. And I know our streets committee also sat down, talked with the sign installer, and if we did not have them currently installed, that was gonna be added to his list to add out there, so.
Speaking, yes, speaking of signs, there's a sign on Freedom Drive that says pass with care, um, in the city limits. So is that allowed for passing in the city limits?
Hmm, what location?
Freedom Drive?
Yeah. Going out of town?
Yeah, it's by.
By the bike thing?
I think, yes.
What? You can pass in city limits?
County Road on In City Limits?
You can't pass on solid lines?
I don't, I don't think that's.
Can't make a U-turn on Main Street on solid lines either, huh? I haven't seen as much of that lately. I haven't seen as much of that lately.
I had a woman talk to me at the post office just the other day, said she backed up and was gonna take off. She looked ahead of her, there was a car coming toward her, but nothing behind her. She backed up and the next thing she knew, the car coming and cut in front of her and parked in the spot next.
In front of the post office, yeah, yeah.
And that, I've seen that more than.
Yeah.
Those signs you can't even see anymore.
And that's on our list as well. It's on our list.
It's not really a U-turn, it's more of an L-turn.
L's where you go. It's technicality.
A J-turn.
By the way, did we have, have this, has this sign person gotten back to us with a proposal or with anything?
No.
Conversation really?
We've been compiling a list of signs and put together the list of your inspections and the current inventory that we have and forwarding that all to them with one complete set of instructions.
And he, so he has that?
So he will have that.
Or he will have that, okay.
All right.
Great. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Weckworth? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thanks.
Council committee updates. Who wants to go first?
There isn't a cable commission update, but I just wanted to let everybody know that Don, the other committee member, will be here and I believe is on the agenda for the next meeting to give an annual report from the cable commission.
Okay.
Thanks.
I believe he's on there, correct, Liza?
I haven't heard yet.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was.
I haven't received communications regarding it. You have mentioned it to me, but I have not.
Oh, I told Don it was that. I thought you sent me an email that it was that date and I told Don it was that. Oh, I told Don it was that. I thought you sent me an email that it was that date and I told Don it was that date. In fact, he communicated me with yesterday and I said, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
We're gonna have to double check on it. I think it was the ninth, seventeenth or nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth, that was the date they gave him, yes.
Okay.
So that's the date he will be here.
Great.
And, um, is there still some crackling going on in our sound system? Is, did I hear that correctly or did somebody, was something bumping in the microphone?
No, you heard it. I have, there was one there.
Okay, there was one right there.
And I have talked to two people there, the one, Wade Warner. And I'm almost to my wit's end how I am going to get, he keeps giving me excuses. Someone's gonna be here tomorrow. I sent more emails. I believe someone is coming. They can't figure the problem out, other than it's in their system.
This crackling?
No.
Oh, okay, the transmission of the audio.
The transmission of the audio. But that could be a new problem. Maybe they, I'll send him an email tonight.
But I was talking about the crackling that's going on in the sound system.
No, I'll learn this.
Well, occasionally.
Yeah.
Oh, about fifty times a night, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like that.
Yeah.
Like that. There we go. That's gotta be a, something in here. Okay, any other, any council updates? It's getting warmer at Ben Don't Smile, like?
Well, I have the two usual reports. Park Board met Monday, May twenty-second, was the last week. And they have just a few items. They discussed the gazebo design. They, when asking for a bid, they want to have the cost of a flat ceiling or a ceiling that goes to the point. And, and so they'll go with probably the cheaper of the two. Um, they want to put a protective screen over light bulbs so that kids will throw things at them. And that, that take, uh, keep the gazebo the same size. The old gazebo has the sidewalk leading from the path to the gazebo. The new one should have a similar path. That was never discussed, but they're replacing exactly what.
Right.
And so it should be, in their opinion anyway. Um, the city building or shelter new, new rental rates. Board was in agreement with raising fees from seventy-five to one-twenty-five and keeping the refundable damage deposited twenty-five, or two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Adopt a park. At first, the group was concerned about having enough volunteers to maintain the park, but when heard that there was only one park left to fill, they were very pleased with that. And then the group, before that meeting, we went and toured the, the senior building and it's very impressive. They're very pleased with that. Then moving on to the hospital board. The update, the team is in the final steps of finalizing construction documents. Construction documents will be released to contractors within the next few weeks for final bidding process. Once the bids are received, the management team will review and make a recommendation to the board and et cetera. I'll just try to make them a little shorter. Foundation capital campaign, they're, uh, based on feasibility study by Doug Stasic. The board is recommending to do a capital campaign for the campus project. Boards, and then the board is going to be doing a self-evaluation through email to be more effective. The input is valuable and needed for a successful assessment. The hospital held its, or got their annual survey, which is when three medical people come in and evaluate all the, the organization from head to toe, all the buildings, all the staff. It took, it started and it surprised everyone that help was held in Arlington first, uh, on March fourteenth. Three surveyors showed up and way they went. And, uh, they're very proud of what they did. They had, uh, non-conformity is, one is a major infraction and, and C two is, is minor and that they give a noteworthy effort. They had two NC ones, uh, but they weren't. They weren't, uh, uh, serious, uh, or, or difficult to fix. The organization corrected the action, or corrected the, now trying to read my. Corrective actions planned. Person responsible, responsible for, um, writing patient information down didn't, it didn't get done. And so they're just going to be more responsible doing that. That was infraction one and infraction two. Uh, following up. Uh, following up with, uh, interviewing patients on how the patient felt they were treated at the hospital and these infractions are to be made up by July twenty-fourth. Then NC two findings. The utility manager system, I guess. I can't remember what that was and that's all I've got written down. Reagan, Reagan dose gave us the report on, uh, the survey and, and Mike Phillips was gonna, but he was unable to attend, so I could shut down my presentation faster. I'm sorry for being so clumsy with this.
I appreciate your.
Appreciate the reports.
Yeah.
We're all interested in, in the future of the hospital and what's going on there, so very interesting. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
I'd just like to pass something along that is not necessarily city business. But, um, after my surgery, I was trying to get in out at, um, Sibley Ridgeview Clinic for rehab. And after almost seven weeks of trying to get the paperwork from the VA to Sibley Ridgeview, they weren't making the connection. And my wife, Chris, made a million phone calls. I made some phone calls. And we contacted, um, Lisa Klink, who was the Sibley County Veterans Service Representative. And she was like a dog on a bone. And, um, I got a, she made some calls Friday and said, if you don't have, hear from somebody on Tuesday morning, let me know. This was a week ago. I gotta call eight o'clock Tuesday morning to start my rehab, so. Wow. That was impressive. And I did pass that along to Commissioner, uh, Pinsky also.
So you just have to know the right people, huh?
Yeah, keep making the phone calls.
Keep making the phone calls. Great.
I'd just like to say that we should bring up the Sunday liquor, liquor sales here in Arlington and, and maybe put that on the next agenda.
Next agenda, definitely, yeah.
City attorney Arneson and I talked about that, so I will poll the vendors and then it will be included as a discussion item as far as what is this council's feelings towards Sunday sales. So it is on the plan.
Okay. All right.
If we can go to the park.
Any other things for discussion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, finally.
Oh, I thought you were gonna go to the park.
Motion is made to, by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion.
So if we don't pass the Sunday liquor thing, can we still go to the park?
To go to the park.
I can still have a beer on the bench.